Good evening and welcome to the July eighth, two thousand and thirteen regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. And initially, Lyle Schmidt is traveling today, and so he's unavailable for our meeting. And Sheena McNally will be arriving shortly. And now, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'll read the school district's mission statement. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. All right, the first action item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the East High School Elevator Project, and then the second item will be the, our Twenty-First Century Task Force Report. But again, the first item is Exhibit A, and this is a public hearing for the East High School Elevator Remodeling Project. And then it's a public hearing because the school district is required to hold public hearings for improvements that may exceed a hundred thousand dollars. There's a remodeling project at East High to convert one of the elevators from, I believe, a-
Freight.
-freight elevator into a passenger elevator. And notice of this public hearing was published in the Waterloo Courier. It's going to be on our agenda later in the, the meeting. It's Exhibit G on page sixty, and that's for the action on it, for the approval of the project. But right now, it's a public hearing, so I hereby declare the public hearing open and would invite any comments from the public, if anybody wants to comment specifically on the East High School Remodeling Project. Now is the time you are free to do so.
I will.
Oh, yes. Jim Day, yes. Yes.
Push the button.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. There it goes. I'm Jim Day. I spent a fair number of years as a staff member at East High School, and having had students try and ride up and down that elevator with handicapping conditions, it was an absolute dangerous disaster. And I commend the board for, for thinking that it needs to be done, and it absolutely is one of the most essential things that should be done at East High for the safety of kids and anybody else that uses that. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, and just to expand upon your point, it's, this will make, bring the elevator really up to code, and it, it really is a safety item for students, so. But it's, it's a pretty technical project, too, being able to do it within the existing portion of the building. It'll be in the same spot, so. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. And all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye. The motion carried and the public hearing is closed. Again, we'll have that later on in our agenda to vote on that. The next item on our agenda, and this is per a vote of the board, this is regarding the acceptance of the Task Force Report from the Twenty-First Century High School Task Force, and this has just been a major project. My mother-in-law was in town over the weekend, and she asked me what's the most important issue for the school district, and without batting an eye, I said the Twenty-First Century High School Task Force. It's the biggest thing that I think the school district will do that will have lasting implications for years and, and really decades. First, we'll get the motion on the table, and then go, I'll turn it over to Dr. Norris to give kind of a summary report, and then we've got a number of members of the task force here in our audience tonight, and we'll hear from them as well. But first, getting the motion on the table. This is Exhibit B on page three, and we have a copy of the Task Force Report in our board packet. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the report with appreciation to the members who served, and direct the superintendent to be, to begin the Phase Two anticipated work as described in the report. Get that motion on the table, please.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. And again, Dr. Norris, I'll turn it over to you for kind of a summary, and then we'll hear from the members of the task force.
And tonight is a, an important milestone in the, the work of the committee. It's not finished at all by a long shot. Our, our work is just really beginning. And so I've begged the members of the committee to stay on and to continue to contribute, but over fifty school-based and district staff and post-secondary and industry leaders and community and faith-based individuals have worked together for, I would say, almost a year and a half to put some recommendations together for you and to visit other schools, and you're going to hear about that tonight. We want to keep it slightly informal, even though I've asked four speakers to lead off. We have a lot of members of the task force tonight. Would you all stand, all of you that worked at one time or another on the task force? Would you please stand? We thank you so much for your service, and thank you for being here tonight. If any of you are inspired to give any other comments to the board during the meeting, we'll certainly recognize you. We did ask for speakers to represent you this evening, and leading off will be one of our parents, Jessica Miller. Welcome, Jessica.
Thank you. Is this on already?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, Dr. Norris kind of gave us a couple of questions that he wanted us to address, and so I just made a few notes. I welcome any questions or any comments. I'm a parent, first and foremost, and that's how I got on to this committee. You know, I'm worried about the future of, of my children. Are they going to have access to the success at, at post-secondary schools? Are they going to be employable when they get done with the school here? And what skill set are they going to have? Are they going to be successful in our community and in the workplace? So that's first and foremost, you know, my responsibility. I'm also a business owner and part of Partners in Education, so I feel like I serve, you know, different roles as part of that. I want to help the school system and the students, and at the same time, better our community and our businesses. And I think that's really the key to this Twenty-First Century Task Force. We're going to involve everybody, so I serve in that capacity. PSYAC is how I was asked to be on this committee. You know, I think that, that's, PSYAC is similar to our task force because we have community, the school leaders, and then our parents all involved in that. And I think part of PSYAC is getting the word out to our community, and Ta, this task force, that's going to be one of our key goals, is reaching out and trying to explain what we were able to see. I mean, to see it, to, to see the hands-on and active involvement is really, really going to be difficult to explain to those people that can't see it. And then, of course, a volunteer and part of community organizations, as well as part of the city council. I just wanted to be a part of making a positive change, and that's what this Twenty-First Century Task Force, I think, is going to do, similar to what Mr. Young stated earlier. So as part of our visit, the ability to watch these students hands-on, not just hands-on because that's what we hear all the time, we want hands-on engagement, it was minds-on as well. I don't want that to be confused in any way. I mean, they were actively engaged, they were involved, and, and again, it's just going to be so difficult to explain this to the people that couldn't experience our, our information, resources in the visits. And then, not even that, the ability, the schools that we visited, they, I would say they perfected it. They were making money for their school and for their trips and for anything else that they wanted to do. And to be able to go into what they would call shop, there was a print, a specific example, there was a print and framing shop where these people were learning everything from creating and hanging and matting frames that you're seeing, to generating the invoices, to seeing what kind of income and expenses were part of their shop. They did it all, and it was just amazing to see that. And then to know that that money was coming in, you know, the community would use the school system to do their framing and their printing, they had laser printers doing it for them, and they were just generating money. That was part of their school system budget. So it wa, it was really interesting. There was also an auto mechanic shop and a small engine shop, and they were fixing lawnmowers, reselling them, and it was just really, really a, a very, very interesting experience. Another thing that really stood out for me, we visited a finance instructor, and he took quite a bit of time with us, and he was talking about the ability to have the business leaders come in and do a presentation to their students, and then the students had the project. Those people would come back and evaluate the projects for them, and then they were able, at the end of the term, to go back and actually go to leadership community, that seminar, and sit down with those leaders and get that experience. So that was another thing that stood out for me. And last but not least, as far as experiences that really stood out, we went to lunch one day, and we happened to run into one of the advisory committee members who owned a large construction company there, and he came over, and the things that he told us, just what the school provides to him, the resources, the students, when they come out, he has no qualms whatsoever, you know, he ha, he has a hiring pool, basically, you know, and he's part of that, that community and that school system, and donates money and time and resources to help that. So those are just a few specific examples. I don't know if, if you're aware from looking at your report, if you saw what we, I did go to Delaware, and we did, visited three separate schools, so that's where I'm speaking of. The committee thinks I'm, or my group thinks I'm joking, but I said, if I had the resources and it was feasible, I would have moved there. And my, I'm serious. My son starts ninth grade this year at East High, and if I could give him that learning, I would do it in a heartbeat. So I'm just telling you, from a parent's standpoint, this is needed. I mean, to be able to see that, it's, it's needed. We need to make some changes. I mean, technology and the internet has changed us as adults. I mean, I can't go anywhere without my phone, and I start twitching, you know? We sit for thirty minutes and we're nervous, you know? And then multitasking for us is almost like breathing anymore. So our, our students, our children have grown up in that. If we feel that way, imagine what they feel like sitting through instruction and, and a lecture. So we need to make some changes. This task force and the subsequent, subsequent school visits have provided additional information and confirmed what we already knew to be true. Our students need and deserve change. There are students, some in Iowa, some just across the state lines, and some further away. But one thing is for sure, they possess skills, education, and experiences that surpass what we're offering here. So I just say that now it is time for all of us to use the research, data, information, and experiences gathered and move into the competitive Twenty-First Century model. Thank you for your time.
Jessica, I have a question.
I'm, I'm out. Did you see that? I was like, oh, I'm out. I delivered my piece, I'm out. That's three, three minutes, that's all I had.
What do you think we, we will need to do to sell this concept to the community?
I think, we talked after our visit, I think the key piece is getting our community business leaders on board, because I think the concern is going to be, how do we come up with the funding? How do we come up with the funding? And to see all of the business people there and supporting this, you know, where we were in Delaware, I think we have to have that structure in place to show that we have businesses that will support us. That's, that's the main thing that came out of it for me, because everybody's going to be worried about the money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, thank you very much, yeah.
Who's next? Abraham? Reverend Abraham Funchess, pastor and director of the Waterloo Human Rights Commission.
And a parent.
And a parent.
Yeah, that was my introduction, isn't it? Yeah, I do serve in those capacities with human rights, you know, as well as the NWAACP and various social service organizations here in the community, but I'm also a parent, and my son right now is doing pretty well in the Waterloo Public School System. But the reason why I was excited about this opportunity in the first place is because we know that there seems to be a disconnect right now between, you know, what the needs are in the community and, of course, what we're producing in terms of our students, and we've got to change something. And so one of the things that we started doing, independent of the High School Twenty-First Century Task Force, was that we started having these book discussions. One of the books we used was one written by Linda Darling Hammond, a preeminent, an eminent educator who actually came to the community via Skype. But nonetheless, she was talking about the need to reconfigure, do things differently than we've done them in the past. The emphasis is not just on teachers in the classroom, but also on the context in where, in which the students are learning. And when you begin to consider that in conjunction with the fact that, you know, right now, there are big issues about diversity and inclusion here in the local community, this disproportionality with respect to black and brown incarceration, et cetera, et cetera, it just moves one who serves as parent and also leader of various organizations to explore ways in which we can move from the philosophical to, to something practical. What can we do to actually make a difference? And so I appreciate, Dr. Norris, the opportunity to be a part of this task force, because I think we began to see and explore some of those answers. When we went to Delaware, and I also had a chance to go to Singley in Texas, we actually had a chance to see teachers and students engaged, interacting together. As Jessica said, you know, it, they were actually engaged with mind, body, and soul in the work that we're, they were doing. And, and when we were in Delaware, we had a chance to see that as well, where the students seemed to have taken pride in what they were learning. When, when you talk to them one-on-one outside of the formal classroom discussions, they seemed to take initiative to go to school because they actually wanted to be there. Some of the things that they were learning that impressed me was they were working on web design in one program, and that the, the teacher began to help connect the students with professionals in the area so that they could hone their craft, get opportunities to go further on to post-secondary institutions, and began to work on careers. They were learning in school, skill sets that would enable them to go right into the workforce if they chose. I think that they, they had opportunities to get some kind of certification, but they could build on those skill sets. And I thought that was impressive, particularly in light of the reports that we're getting from our own Chamber of Commerce, when they say that right now in the community, the skill sets necessary in order to push forward, the business needs in our area is virtually nonexistent. And quite frankly, I think it's just unacceptable not to do anything at this stage in the game in order to change the face of education as we know it. We cannot afford to sit by idly and do nothing. And so the opportunity to see these various paradigms that are working around the country was significant because I think we were able to bring back some ideas that have been compiled in the report, and it seems that the most logical thing that we would do is to move forward, explore these ideas, try to make something happen, because to do nothing at this point is just simply not an option. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, yeah, for your work and-
Thank you.
And, and your thoughts as well. We appreciate it.
And this is Brett Cantrell, the pastor at the First Christian Church.
Even Central Christian Church here in Waterloo.
Oh, my gosh. Central Christian Church.
And this is the first church that wasn't a First Christian Church I've served. So I understand, Mr. Young, Dr. Norris. I was asked to serve on the committee, and that's why I served on the committee, but particularly as a pastor and as a parent. As a pastor who I think by my calling has a desire to do what I can to make our community better, to connect with those who find life not to be as convenient or helpful, I think this was a perfect way to begin to express that pastoral call, perhaps, if you will, to turn children at risk into children who risk for a better tomorrow, for children and youth, and educators, and administrators, and staff, and community leaders to find a place of excellence in education. As a parent, I have an incoming freshman at West, and I selfishly want him to have available the very best educational and social and moral experience that can possibly exist. I think there's a good system in place, but I have learned through this process that there are wonderful opportunities for the future. I hope for him that there will be a pragmatic educational process that's relevant and is incredibly future-oriented. I hope that I and he can be part of the solution and not the problem, and that is the fundamental reason that I'm here today. I will not just stand from the sidelines, I want to be part of the process, however that is. So I had the wonderful opportunity in the beautiful winter days of early November in Waterloo, which I love so dearly, to have to travel to the balmy, warm, beautiful paradise of San Diego. And there we journeyed and toured High Tech High, and I left very impressed with the model and pleased to be invited to go there. What I found there was a project-based, a problem-solving, a real-world application of the core curriculum, the mathematics, the science, the geography, the, the history, the language, where they were utilizing those aspects and learning teams with a small number of students. I witnessed excited and highly engaged students, and I found that to be a remarkable attribute. I found the students working on relevant application in multi-disciplinary curriculums, where math and history would come together as students worked to solve a problem that was real, and sometimes solving a problem that others in the community had not, working with, again, businesses, ignored organizations in the community. I saw students who were striving for the future, thinking long-term, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, not just the present, just to graduate from high school, just to jump through the hoops, or worse yet, to think about the way it was a few years ago. I discovered a place that was a non-tenured school, non-tenure. No one has tenure, which means we're always on the cutting edge, working to have our place and to make things better. I think that's incredibly important. I saw students that had a unique maturity that I still cannot understand, and I would hope that for my son. They were articulate, they were proud, and they were humbly working hard on their education. How that happened, perhaps I don't know. They enjoyed learning and learned with excitement. And the other thing I noticed is they took high advantage of the opportunities before them, and I think we can explore more as we go down the road, why that was the case. One of the unique attributes is they had to do a internship, I believe during their senior year, micro, their senior year, it was about a month-long internship. This was not put together for them, but they had to start from ground zero, plan the project, organize a project, find the place to do the project, then to do the project and then report upon what had taken place, not just for busyness. Matter of fact, that was greatly frowned upon, just to do clerical work, nothing against clerical work, I hope I didn't offend anyone, but to do something that truly was relevant, something that was purposeful, not just busy. Why do you believe we need to improve schools? I think we have to prepare our students in this fluid culture, for a culture that changes rapidly. I think, in one sense, what they learn today will be out of date before they leave the classroom. It changes so rapidly. If we are not thinking a great distance down the road, as I believe new tech was, high tech was doing, we are in big trouble. I think we need to be educating for 2065 and not for 1997. And what I mean by that is my daughter was born in 1997, and we shouldn't be focusing on her birth, but we better be thinking about where will she be when she retires in 2065. I think these schools are doing that. I think the other reason is, as Noah and Madison, there are thousands of others like them who need to be able to take a grasp of society, a grasp of the culture, and to find their place that has immense purpose. Technology will have to be at the core of it, not technology that's just superficial and can we say, isn't this nice, we have it in the classroom, but utilizing technology not only to its fullest, but imaginatively beyond what others are doing. Robotics at High Tech was a prime example of how they were utilizing what they had learned to develop concepts for industry in that community. Can you imagine that, freshmen and sophomores developing technology and concepts and product for commerce in their community? That's pretty insignificant. What experiences did I witness? I think, basically, I would just assess it in this way, I saw quality and not quantity. I saw an endeavor to strive for quality in everything, and the heck with quantity. Qualitative, not quantitative. I saw a place, and I know there will be something about bricks and mortars at some point, but a place where buildings were not the issue. The issue was a high commitment to high caliber learning that engaged the student at the place where the student could be engaged, individualized learning, I suppose, and using all of the curriculum together to be about living and doing and to make our world better. Sounds pretty grandiose, but I think we have to be grandiose. I think that's the world we live in, and if we are anything but grandiose, well, let's just be about busyness and be honest. That's all I have. Any questions?
Brent, you hadn't, oh, I'm sorry.
This is Mike.
You mentioned terms like non-tenured, small classrooms, qualitative. How do you, do you see the potential for that here?
Those are definitely models upon which we could learn and explore, and I think those are models that are being used, from my understanding, in industry, in commerce, and they definitely are the growing edge of churches. So we're finding that to be the way that we do work the best right now.
How do you find, similar to Bernice's question earlier, how do you feel that we would best promote this?
We need to begin to talk a whole lot, and to speak loudly to the community, and to put a challenge out there, there is no exception. This, we either become future-oriented, and we become creative, and we become grandiose and dream for the biggest thing, or again, we just go about the busyness of the day. I think we have to begin to be prophets in this community and say there is no choice. If we do nothing, then we're going backwards. If we do something, we're staying where we are, but unless we do something great, we're going nowhere. So I think we have to sell it. I have to sell it, you have to sell it. We've got to get all kinds of people on board. I love the concept of getting community leaders in business, absolutely. These schools had a great deal of people coming into their school. The teachers are, were persons who had real-life experience, and then they became educators. Nothing against educators, okay? But they didn't be, strive to be an educator first, but they were out in the real world, and they brought that to their students, so the students could definitely know that what they were learning was something that would be utilized. It was real.
I was very impressed with San Diego as a world.
Very much so. And we did have a chance to see the middle school and the elementary school, the same philosophies and principles and project-based learning and problem-solving and quantitative work were being done. And again, there was just, there was just an atmosphere that was just conducive to joy and conducive to life, and just, just drove curiosity, I think, is what I discovered. It drove curiosity, and there was no difference between the academic kind of guru and the one who struggled with basic mathematical fact- one who struggled with basic mathematical facts. It wasn't on that scale. All the students somehow were excited about learning and were learning and were growing. And so it wasn't, again, that quantitative, I'm on the A-list and you're on the C-list. I don't think I ever heard terms like that.
I think you hit on something very important about each student needs to find their place in life, in culture, in society, because so many people become, feel disfranchised, and then we have unrest and we have problems.
And my experience here is, that is true, but it wasn't the teachers coercing it, it was the students empowering themselves to do that. So, you know, you can't force it upon them, is, I think, the discovery. I mean, it's grandiose, individualized education, but somehow there has to be an atmosphere and a model in place that allows that student to actually do it for themselves. Thank you very much. It was an honor, and I look forward to continue to work.
Thank you again.
Shall I list all of your accomplishments, Mr. Day?
No, let's just, let's just suffice it to say that I am involved in this committee, or got involved in this committee, over issues of equity, which has been my driving force forever. My name is Jim Day, I'm the Education Chair of the NAACP, sit on Waterloo's Equity Committee along with several other committees in the city. And I asked to be the last one because I want to tie some things together, or at least hopefully tie some things together, because I'm not sure which is the best model. That lays in the lap of you guys and additionally with us as we plan. But I think one of the things that came out as we talked to every group that came back and made their reports was that students felt empowered, that students felt involved in the decision-making process, that students were asked their opinion and then their opinions were listened to. I have had the privilege of working with students for, well, a long number of years, for a good 10 years after I no longer received a paycheck from education. And one of the things that kids continually say to me is that, why don't they ever listen to what we say? Why don't they ever hear what we think's important? And we're busy with the best of intentions, making decisions for those who need to be involved in the decision-making process. So having said that, I want to amplify a couple of things. I too was privileged enough to go to the Delaware site, where there were four high schools in the district, all with a career based to what was going on. One of the things that we were fortunate enough to do was to meet with the group of ninth-grade teachers who are still involved in a totally comprehensive program, and that the ninth-graders in those schools are doing exploratories, are traveling around to the shops, to the career areas, that they are thinking about becoming a part of. Those teachers met together weekly to plan how they interacted, how they fostered and developed the interests of their students moving forward, and how they worked collegially, that hardly came out, right, to make it successful for them. Because you know and we know that there are state requirements for graduation that have to be met. There are things that have to be in place that don't have to do with building houses, fixing cars, or doing all the other pieces. So, part of what the students in Delaware said to us was that they didn't mind doing those other pieces, that they got to pick and choose to some degree how those pieces were put together, but with the understanding that that was half of their day and the other half of their day was spent working on what they wanted to work on. We went to one building where there was a legal assistant program, and so we asked the kids, you know, are you going out to be legal assistants, knowing how hard it is to find legal assistant help sometimes in our community? And the one young lady said, no, I'm not. She said, I'm going to use what I know to pay for my college to go into business. Another young man who was part of a carpentry program said, I'm not going to be a carpenter, I'm going to be a physician, but I'm going to build houses during the summer that will allow me to pay for my schooling. So these kids were there and focused. What we heard again and again and again was, they didn't have absence problems. They had a 97% attendance record in their district, in the four-school district. They didn't have discipline problems. If kids didn't do what they needed to do, they were just out of the program and had to hunt for another building. But nobody did that. They all stayed and they were all focused. The one school that we went to was particularly interesting to me because it was extremely disproportionate in the number of ethnic minorities that were a part of the building. They were one of the most successful schools that there was. They were in the center of Wilmington, which is a city not unlike Waterloo, and these young people walked the halls, behaved like young people, weren't out of control, were engaged in the classroom. This was the place where Jessica talked about, where we saw the financial planning people. Those kids were working at the table so hard that they didn't want to stop and talk to us. They wanted to stay engaged and keep working. You know, usually, when I've stuck my head into the classroom, it's like, Mr. Day, take us someplace besides exactly where we are right now, we want to go forward with, you know, talking about something else. We didn't see that in these buildings. You know, I don't think their teachers were any better equipped than our teachers are. I don't think their teachers were any more caring about their kids than ours are. But I do think that kids were involved in the decision-making process and saw their future moving on. To take a step to answer your questions about Brent's comment on qualitative, I have a sign that hangs, and Jane's heard me say this, and Bev's heard me say this time after time, that hung in my office, hangs in my home now, that says, not everything that counts can be counted, and not everything that can be counted counts. It was from a former educator from the previous century. However, as a community and as some of the things that we have to deal with, we have to put counts on things. And they were very careful to know in Delaware that they still had state tests, that they had regulations that they had to pass, that everything had to be done, but the kids could focus on it in a way that it became part of their everyday experience and not, you know, we're going to take an I T E D, or we're going to take an A C T, or we're going to take this test or that test, and it was just a kind of a part of who they were. So, to draw mine to an end, you know, we need to be successful for everybody, and my final statement is Waterloo right now is approximately 40% ethnic minority, not counting Bosnian students in our high schools. Those kids need to be successful, as well as every other kid in our district. And if we can't walk away with something in terms of a plan that says, we've been successful for every child, and the fact that no child left behind, in theory, was a great program, and when we got done putting all the rules and regs on it, it didn't turn out so well, but in theory, it was a great program. We should not be leaving any child behind. Jessica told me a story, and as a special educator, it struck me well, or Jessica started the story. One of the other buildings that we were in had a Level III program. The Level III program is where the framing was done. They also did all the embroidering on all the shirts that all the students wore to decorate their shops, and so everybody had kind of a semi-uniform. You know, if you were in culinary, you had your chef's outfit, and they all got to pick and choose. But those were all done in-house by Level III special ed kids. The billing, the production, the designs, everything was laid out by the kids who were the least academically capable kids in their district. Level II and Level I kids were incorporated into every other program, just like any other kid, with a resource concept on how to deal with them. So I think those are things that we need to consider, but they are possible, and we saw it happen, by making just some adjustments in that education process and in the way the system is delivered. So, any questions? Thank you.
I do have one question, Jim. You had said about that they desire to be successful. What do you think gives those kids a greater ability to desire to be successful than our kids?
I think that they have a choice on how they get invested, and I don't mean that our kids don't have choices, but as we move forward, the kids have to feel that there is someplace that they can go, that they can interact with people, and that whole notion of relationship building seemed to be just a major part of what happened in those school districts. And it was because, I think, and I'd asked others who were, at least went where I went, they were working with people with whom they felt a close connection and a kinship to what they wanted to do, or at least what they wanted to be at that time. So if they were wanting to be in a carpentry program, there was a carpenter they could talk to. And we all like to talk to people who talk about the stuff that we talk about, to understand our job, you know? One of the first things as Americans, if we have a cultural thing that we do, is, you know, we meet people, we say hi, how are you, we jump through the formalities, and then we say, and what do you do? You know, and that's where we begin our conversations. Oh, yeah, well, I know so-and-so who also was a tool and die maker at John Deere for 25 years, and this is what he always told me, and then that spins a conversation that lets you go someplace else. So they would talk to adults who would talk to them as though they were adults, to a large degree. Those kids could walk out of that carpentry program with most of, or at least with the first year of their apprenticeship done. And Jessica and I have had this conversation before too. I was an apprentice roofer, that's what I did when I went to college. It wasn't an easy thing to do, but you come out with a skill that you can do, that leads to an occupation, that can make you some money, and you are a third, a half to a third of the way there when you leave high school.
Did you hang up a shingle, or? Never, never mind. Sorry.
Shingles is something I know a lot about.
I want to thank you, Jim, and thank all of you, and especially thank all of our educators, teachers, principals, and business folk that are with us this evening. Thank you for attending all of the meetings, and thank you for visiting, leaving your place of work. I think we've made great progress with our academy system. I think it's, was a necessary step and was the first and important step. And in doing so, we've managed to motivate some, if not many, of students and getting them thinking about careers. But it's now time to move forward with the Waterloo version of some of the things we've seen. We don't have any desire to create an exact model of what we saw everywhere, but what will work in Waterloo, what would be important to our employers, but important to our kids, and all of those things. And so in Phase Two, we begin this process of, before selling, informing, because information will cause many, many people to believe what these fine folks saw. And so our next three months is going to be preparing and then disseminating information, and going to lots of town meetings, and I'm hoping all of these people will join me at one or more of those, and we'll set up meetings with business leaders, we'll talk to anyone that'll listen, and then we'll begin measuring public opinion about what people think about our plans. But anyway, thanks to all of you, and all of us would stand ready for questions. We're not at a point yet where we've made any decision about which model. That's pretty clear by looking at the report, but we do believe we need to find a Waterloo model incorporating many of the features we've seen. I think, just for the record, there'll always be a great need for what many of us would view as a more traditional or a more comprehensive education. That's clear, we're always going to need some of those things, but I hearken back to a very high-performing group of kids at one high school in Florida about 15 or 20 years ago, and I think they were in, I know they were in a program very similar to International Baccalaureate, although it wasn't that exact program, and they were often asked, what is their favorite class? And many of them would say, they were also required, all of them were required to take a careers-type class. And it was the class they looked forward to because it was something relevant, they could go explain to people why that made a difference. And these were all people that were going to be, I assume, professionals and doctors and lawyers, and, but, so, I think the key word today, and you heard it from many people, that the key word is just having a relevant educational experience that young people can say relate to the real world somehow, and they can see the tie-in.
Thank you, Dr. Norris. Are there other comments from board members?
Well, I just wanted to reiterate a little bit. I was on the committee, and I totally agree that the kids, I went to Texas and was impressed to see them, but I also want to take heed, it's kind of a precarious position, that the kids weren't all perfect. I saw kids making out in the hall, and I saw kids not paying attention, you know.
That was the Health Academy, Sue.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, kids are kids wherever they are. So we can't, and like I said, it's kind of precarious to say, in anything, when you're trying to promote something new, to totally disregard what we have, because I do believe the academies have done a very good job with the start. I mean, it's fun to see the engagement in the culinary arts and the success of that and the different, I think a lot of refinement needs to be done, I think, but I think what we have here is not like horrible. So anyone watching, or, you know, and our teachers, we have great teachers here, and we have teachers that are engaged, that want our kids to learn, that are, have small communities and small learning communities, and so I don't want to be in the position to say, well, it's really not working in Waterloo. I think we have some very positive things going on in Waterloo. I think that we can refine them and get better and shoot for the grandiose, as you had stated, I like that. And I just think that, you know, to idealize that we go to these visits and kids are perfect, and they sit there and they weren't disruptive, and they didn't, that's not it. They were kids just like our kids. So I think the engagement helped them, and I, what I saw in the engagement kept them interested and motivated and desired to learn more and engage in the specific thing that was of interest to them, and I think that's critical to know that we can find the interest for the kids. So I, the task force and the visits, I mean, it was fun to go to those schools and see that and just see how the concepts work, and it's exciting to see how that will work in Waterloo, so.
I guess I would encourage the committee to, or the task force to look beyond high school, and maybe we need to go down a grade or two, and to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, to work with some of the kids to introduce some of these concepts and some of this newer way of thinking in career education. I think that is happening as well in our middle schools now, but to encourage the, whatever we come up with for this high school, that it is translated down into the middle schools as well to get some of that exposure.
Yeah, I think you're right, Mike, because kids, I remember junior high, when I was in junior high, I didn't think at all about what I was going to do out after I was going to graduate. Work? I mean, I was in junior high, there was a lot of other things going on. So besides informing the public of the needs that we have, we also need to inform our students, get them to thinking about career choices.
I think we have an idea, some, one of the speakers mentioned, and I don't remember who, in ninth grade, they took them to all of the different career academies, and that would be a start for us to introduce that concept, to get them thinking, maybe in eighth grade, since our middle school last year is eighth grade, to take them to all of the different career academies and help them make that decision. So we have a lot from the committee to build on, so the only way I can see us going is forward.
Dr. Norris, one thing I felt like that got left out from the report is that it wasn't just shop. We all talked about the different programs in the shop, but there were college We all talked about the different programs in the shop, but there were college-level programs. We went to a biochem class where students were cloning plants and then spending the afternoon at college. And I know in the report, when you guys look at it, you'll see that, where the universities and the community colleges played active roles. I mean, they were taking kids, busing kids, they were spending half-days there. So it isn't just the, the shop classes.
The trades, or the...
Exactly, and I just, for those people that are listening or reporting on this, I just want to make clear that it's, it's all levels.
That's a very good point, and, and just for this discussion, if there's anybody else in the audience that has any point, I, I'm not expecting anything, but I, I want everybody to feel welcome. If there's anything else to add to, please feel free to step forward, yeah, please.
Beth, come on up, yeah, come on up front, please.
You know, I'm so excited about this whole thing.
I would have been shocked if Beth didn't speak.
Sorry. Just, and I just want to piggyback on what was just said, because when I went to Delaware, they're all called shop. But we were in a chemistry lab, it's still called shop, but those kids were getting their entire first year of college chemistry out of the way. And I went in kind of prejudiced, thinking that I was going to see a lot of kids that wanted to go right to work after they finished high school. The majority wanted to go to college, and the beauty of it was that I might want to be a forensic scientist, but I could be in chem lab and tell you how that would transfer to my future. But I could be in the bio lab that Jessica talked about and talk about how that transferred to my future. So no matter what shop they were in, these kids could relate to us how that is going to affect their future. And then, just because I don't want to take a lot of time, just want to mention the, the guy that Jessica said that when we, we saw him at lunch, he, the community member, he's one of their advisory boards, he said to us he would be glad to come to Iowa, and he would be glad to talk to our business leaders. And I think that's one of the things that we can think about doing, is bring people to our businesses so that we can, so our business leaders can hear what's in it for me, if they support us in this.
Thank you, Beth.
Yeah, I mean, they're getting skilled employers out of, employees out of this.
I just wanted to come back and quickly add that, as a man of color in this community, we respect the fact that we do have excellent teachers in the school system, and we, we've got great educators, great civic leaders, and what have you, but the, the data speak for itself. We have a lot of youth, black and brown females, that are not doing well academically in this particular setting. And so I just want to reiterate the fact that the reason why I personally am excited about what we have seen is that I believe it is an opportunity to do something perhaps different than what we have been currently exploring with, that might actually make the difference between this high rate of dropout and disengagement, and getting all of the community, perhaps the children will lead the parents or the family members. But if we can get these youth engaged, then it will revol- revolutionize the community.
It's a very good point, thank you. Anything else anybody wants to add to what we've heard? I would again like to thank everybody that served on the committee, and especially those of you that got actively involved. I know it was an incredible time commitment, I think it was twenty site visits, and that's a lot of work and a lot of time to be away. But we appreciate all that you're doing, and all that you've done here. And this report, as I read through it, it just got me excited. I don't think I knew it at the time, a year and a half ago, or even two years ago. But I thought this report, and, and basically what you've done as a committee, was fantastic. Initially, as I read the report, I kept hearing over and over again the talk about engagement, and I think that is kind of relevance. Is well, but also the fact that preparing students for the future is so important, and we've got to do something. As I look at this as, as kind of phase one, what I see is, it's the report, it's the task force of saying initially that there is something better out there, there are good examples out there, in that we, as a Waterloo community schools, can and should do better in that. And then it's giving some possibilities to the community. Now, it's gonna need to be the entire Waterloo schools' community that figures out exactly what it is. Thinking big picture, it looks like there are a couple different models besides the status quo. One of them is kind of the, what I'll call the name brand topics, there's high-tech high and new-tech high. I went to South Dakota, and we saw the new-tech high and that model, and that has some advantages and disadvantages. It sounds like some others, especially those of you that went to Delaware, you saw, and San Diego was kind of the high-tech high as well. Delaware seemed to be a little more, um, individualized, I guess, for that area, and that has a number of advantages as well. I don't think it's wise to, to start out with the end in mind and saying, we're gonna sell this to the Waterloo schools' community, and that sort of thing. It needs to be the community's decision on what to do and where to go, but your report kind of gets us to that point, which is the next step. But it also, to give another perspective at this, our school district, I think, went through some horrible times as a school district, mainly financially, but everything else, probably going into the nineties and beyond, where it seemed like every year, if you look back historically, every year, every couple of years, it was just a lot of putting out fires. Whether that was closing schools or doing other things, as graduation rate was incredibly low at the time. But fortunately, over the last, maybe about fifteen years, there's been much more stability, it seems. And I'm, I'm painting with a very broad brush, I mean, obviously, there's ups and downs throughout every school year. But it seems like there's been stability, and now's the time where, because of that stability, we can do something like this, where we're looking much farther ahead. We're not just looking as to what we have to do right now in order to cut the budget, you know, dramatically, or lay off a hundred and twenty teachers, or whatever it is in a single year, that we do have, generally have some stability, and we can do this and move forward. It's not easy, though, on the other hand. The twenty schools that, or the twenty sites that you all saw, I think, for the most part, are kind of the high examples of communities that are doing well, that have, that have chosen the right thing. There are also examples, though, of other communities, other school districts, that have chosen programs, and it just didn't work, and they go for a couple of years and it doesn't work. I think Cedar Rapids Prairie, is that the, they're kind of, they started for a couple of years, and now they're kind of backing out. So it's, it, it's not an easy thing to do. This process has probably taken a lot longer. I don't think anybody realized that when you started in February of two thousand twelve, it would be July of twenty thirteen, we're sitting here with this initial report.
I told them it was just two months.
So you got everybody to serve in the committee, you just say, oh, it's just a couple of meetings, it'll be easy. But I, I, it's so important, and I, I think will have such lasting impacts, that it's important to be methodical. Now, to keep moving forward, not just to get bogged down in it, or worry about what can go wrong, so that kind of makes everybody just sit on their hands, but it's important to go through it in, in a process. And we'll keep working at it, we have to keep working at it. But I think it's a very good thing that we can, and I'm sure there'll be some ups and downs as we go through this process over the next months, or even if it's years, but we'll figure it out, we'll keep working at it till we get there. So thank you again to all of you, please stay involved during this process, but we'll get there and hopefully keep improving. Thank you all. Now, if there's anything further, that will, as a board, will officially basically accept the, the motion. Any further discussion on that motion that's before us? Then I'll ask for a vote on the, the recommended motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks again, and again, stay involved, this will be a, a very, very much an ongoing process. And we need all the help we can get, so thanks again. All right, and our next item on the agenda is another good thing as well, and this is a, a request to the Blackhawk County Gaming Association for improvements to the health academies at East High and West High. This is on Exhibit C on page thirty-two of our board packet. Crystal Buzza's here, and, and she has been very involved with the, the application, or the grant submittal. We'll get the motion on the table, and that motion is that the Board of Education authorize submission of the grant to the Blackhawk Gaming Association in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars for improvements to the health academies at both East and West High Schools.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Thank you. And Crystal, if you could, give us some background information on this, please.
Yep, the Waterloo Schools Foundation has been working very hard to get in a number of different funds for a variety of projects and initiatives that we, as a district, feel are important. And one of them is to help with the career academies and putting in two health labs. One would be at West, and the other would be at East. This is a project that we are definitely well aware of, as the district is gonna go ahead and commit to remodeling once all the funding is put in place. The project originally started from a challenge from an anonymous donor. They did a fifty thousand dollar grant, and if they could match that, then they would, the foundation would receive those fun, that funds. So with that challenge grant, along with the request from the gaming association, they're hoping to buy, basically, it's a simulator system that would be for East and West, that would allow teachers to program teaching torsos to simulate real-life experiences. So whether it's convulsions, or injuries, things like that, that would give students and teachers real time of how things are happening, and then they would go back and review this type of thing. And this is actually the same type of technology that a lot of the colleges are starting to use before they would use actual patients to teach on. So this is a much safer, and it would be, it's a nicer lead-in to college for all of our local colleges. Hawkeye and Kaplan, they use very, very similar systems, and so as our students transition out of high school and move to the next level, they'll be familiar with how those systems work. And ideally, this would help them, for a lot of our students, we have a certified nursing assistant program that they can get in high school, so this will just only help them with that experience as they can have an actual job while they're still in high school, hopefully move on to become a nurse. And in rural Iowa, it's very hard to attract practitioners, physicians, nurses, and so, uh, nursing assistants, practitioners are very important, and so this is a really great way to make sure we're growing our own to stay here and take care of us, as we all get older, we need more medical care.
Will these be similar labs, or will both schools use the same lab?
The, each school will have their own lab, but they'll be identical. All the, they're getting the same equipment for both schools.
So the seven seventy-seven is for, the cost for both labs?
Correct, yep. And already, they're already working on the remaining, assuming they'll get the Blackhawk Gaming. The remaining is a hundred and thirty-three thousand. They're already talking with, along with a number of our own school personnel, two different businesses, specifically hospitals, on, you know, how can we help make this project come to reality? And the plan is that the remodeling of the project would start the fall of twenty fourteen.
It's very exciting, no, it all, it all sounds very good. Any further questions or discussion? If not, Crystal, thank you for your help, and I'll ask for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, and the chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Crystal. All right, the next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. If anybody wants to come forward and address the school board on any topic other than, I guess, personnel items, you're, now's the time to do it, and you're more than welcome to do that. I will read a card if there is anybody that wants to speak, and please feel free if you want to. Does anybody wish to address the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda. I'm staring at Marty as I'm saying it. Anybody else is welcome, but if there's nobody else, we'll, we'll go on. The next item on the agenda is a consent agenda tonight. There are twelve items on the consent agenda, and I'll go through and read them. They consist of minutes of the June tenth, regular school board meeting, and a June twentieth special session, which was regarding some property and facility matters, then personnel appointments and adjustments, then bills due and payable between board meetings, then approval of the East High elevator remodel project that we had the public hearing for earlier, then a mask care shelters agreement with the American Red Cross for East, West, Bunker, Carver, Hoover, Central, and Orange. Then donation from the Dr. Carleen Bradford Phillips Fund for Carver, and the John and Marge Young Family Fund for West High School from the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa. And then we have two open enrollment appeals. Next, we have administrative and administrative support salaries for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen at three point eight percent. Then we have our board meeting dates for the upcoming school year through June of next year. Then we have the Urban Education Network membership dues for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. That's the consortium of the larger school districts in Iowa. And then finally, we have setting our graduation rate dates for the high schools for the class of twenty fourteen in late May of twenty fourteen. Seems, uh, it's a reminder that school is fast approaching, and it'll be next May before we know it. That's the consent agenda. Are there any items board members wish to be removed from the agenda?
Aye.
Aye, and that is the donation from the Community Foundation for Carver and West High.
E.
E, okay, and that's personnel appointments and adjustments? And I'll ask that Exhibit F on page forty-four be removed as well. That's bills due and payable between board meetings. Are there any other items board members wish to be removed? Anybody in the audience? We have some district personnel here too, and some of those items, does, is there anything to add to the information that we have in our board packets? We're more than happy to pull those off the consent agenda, but if not, we're, we'll leave them on there and, and move through with it. All right, if there's nothing further, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items E, F, and I.
Move to approve.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, and the chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to Exhibit E, Personnel Appointments and Adjustments. It starts on page thirty-eight of our board packet, and it's got four pages following of a number of, there are five pages, excuse me, a number of assignments. Um, the mo, uh, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And discussion?
Deb, I just wondered, this is a pretty lengthy list of moving in assignments, and where does that set us up for fall? I know we won't know everything until we know final numbers, but how does this look in terms of, you know, are, are most of our hires and our moves done at this point?
Well, every time a new job is posted, every. Every time a new job is posted, we, internal candidates have an opportunity to move. So what we've basically done this time is just hung on to them for a while, so you could see them all at once. Yeah, we haven't seen any transfers since, it's been months. And so we just decided to put them, to do them all together, so you could get an idea of how people are moving around the district. Uh, we probably have a dozen jobs, and so the opportunities, that there'll be fewer opportunities for people to move as we fill those remaining positions.
Thank you.
And that's kind of the same area. I was like, Deb, when it says reassigned, so does that mean there were like bumped out of their current position?
No, it meant, meant that they have a new assignment, based on typically a transfer.
And they've requested the transfer.
Voluntary transfer, yes. Some individuals, because of our PLA status, have an opportunity to transfer. We noted them as an involuntary transfer, as a nature of the, of the actual PLA status, but other than that, yeah.
And then I noticed there's quite a few special needs, para, special needs teacher at Orange. Is that because of expecting more students there, or, I guess, what is the criteria for that?
Is there a...
Well, I just noticed there's, um, special needs para on the top of involuntary transfers continued.
On page forty-two.
And like, it says new position, new position. Whenever there's a new position, I, I kind of look at that, and so then the special needs teacher is a new position?
If it's a new position, it may be because an individual has resigned and has moved in, or it, because a, a student has moved, and there's no one to fill that. If it's a new position, it may be because an individual has resigned and has moved in, or it, because a, a student has moved and there's no one to fill that, that position. And so it would be considered new. If a person is, if this, a student had not had a para before and they're assigned a para through their IEP, then that would be considered a new position.
Okay.
Um, many times if a classroom moves, we will consider that a new position. So as we move classrooms around, if a special classroom moves to another building for space or agility or whatever the, the reason might be, then there'd be a new position that would require a para educator. Uh, we don't require the individual who was in a job like that. If they move, if the, if the classroom moves, they don't have to.
They have an option.
They have an option to go. And if they don't go, then that's considered a new position.
Okay, great. And then one other question. What is a librarian teacher?
Funny that you ask. Um, a librarian teacher, as we know, would be a media specialist. But the Board of Educational Examiners in collaboration with the Department of Ed agreed to, to return that licensure name to teacher librarian or librarian teacher. So, you know, for a number of years, we had moved into the decades of uh media.
Media.
Teacher, and now we're back to librarian teacher, teacher librarian. That's actually the name of the licensure now.
Yeah, because they're a teacher. I mean, they have, yeah.
So it's licensed through the state the same as a t- or, or, or through the Board of Educational Examiners and?
Right, right. When you used, you used to get a media technology, now you get teacher librarian.
Okay. Gotcha, okay.
Good to know, thank you.
You bet.
Any further questions? Okay, if not, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes, I have motion carried. The next item on the agenda um is exhibit F uh on page forty-four. Um, this is a list of a number of bills um due and payable. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second. Okay, and before we start discussion, I'll abstain from voting on this matter because as an attorney, um, one of my clients is paid by one of the bills. Any discussion or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Um, and the chair abstains. So motion carried. That takes us next to the um donation from the Community Foundation. It's exhibit I on page sixty-six. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accepts and acknowledges the donations in the amount of three hundred and ninety-six dollars to the George Washington Carver Academy and two thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars to West High School. Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay, in discussion?
I just thought we should um recognize them a little more publicly, so I'd ask Crystal up.
Yes, and um these, both of these have been reoccurring annual donations that Carver and West High School have gotten and they have made a huge impact. I know Carver specifically has, over the past couple of years since I've been with the district, focused their funding on their STEM education. Um, so they've really been able to build up their robotics program, um which has been great for them. So we truly appreciate um that family fund for continuing to support Carver. And West High School in the past has really used theirs for their health and fitness education and really building um that program that um Mike Simram has really worked hard at growing. Um, they recently got a large donation from Lowe's li- earlier this year. And so that's one thing that they've been able to continue to buy equipment, um to really help students become physically and mentally more healthy. Um, so I suspect that there's, I know there's a few more things that he has left that he'd like to purchase for that. So it'll be up to that school to decide what they want, but obviously Ms. Morris has their wish list. But we definitely appreciate both those families and the Community Foundation for continuing to support us in those ways.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mike. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes, I have motion carried. That takes us on to um exhibit uh P on page eighty-two. Um, and this is the uh approval of the proposed agreements. Um, it is, uh, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the proposed agreements with the Waterloo Educational Association and the Waterloo Educational Support Personnel for the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen school year. You get that motion on the table, please. Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I know there was just an awful lot of um, of work put in through the negotiating committees on, on really all sides and it came together. I think everything this year has been delayed a little bit with the legislature and the, of all the growth and everything else. But um, I will turn it over now. Uh, Dr. Smith, if you could provide some background information on this?
Um, the negotiations process, as you said, um takes a lot of time. It's pretty intense. But I think in, on all instances, or in both instances, our teams worked very well together and were able to, to reach voluntary agreements in both cases. I know uh Deb is here and if she had additional comments, I think she probably will support my comments, but um I'm, we're, we were pleased to be able to, to reach agreements.
Yeah, and a, again, it's with both bargaining units, with WEA and WESP. And again, a point of, eh, voluntary agreements, there was no.
Absolutely.
Arbitration on uh, on either side. So we appreciate everybody, Deb and all your members as well, and also from the WESP.
As a whole, they're gratifying.
Yeah, yes.
May I ask, did the healthcare premiums go up?
Um, just minimal.
Okay.
Little over it was, one point one four percent, one point eight percent.
And these are total package agreements for both, yeah?
Total package, yes.
Three point eight one percent and three point six nine percent. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes, I have motion carried. Thank you again to all of you involved. Uh, the next item on our agenda is um for membership in the Iowa Association of School Boards. Uh, this is exhibit Q on page eighty-three. Um, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the payment of ten thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen membership dues to the Iowa Association of School Boards.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. In a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Um, and uh, uh, discussion. Um, this item has been pushed off and part by me. I'm, I'm, eh, the Iowa Association of School Boards, I think, went through a very tumultuous time. Five or six years ago?
Maybe three.
Or three or four years ago. Um, I think it has gotten better. It's, I still think it has tremendous m- room for improvement though. That um, Urban Education Network, um which is another organization, which I think has become more important, in my opinion, to the Waterloo School District, which is a, a smaller group of just the urban school districts, the larger school districts in the state. Um, but the uh, um Iowa Association of School Boards, I think, did get complacent. I think it, it has worked to improve. Um, eh, but I also think this is a financial decision as well with some of the benefits of membership and really, I guess, the consortium um aspect of it, so. I uh, almost, with some reservation though, but still am supportive of it. But Dr. Norris, is there anything you wanted to add or, or Mr. Coughlin?
Well, um, eh, let, let me just say that um each and every year since the debacle.
Yeah.
Um, they have been uh slowly and steadily improving under the leadership of Tom Downs and Galen. Remind me, Hauser. I can't believe I blanked on that today. Um, they have been, I'm on uh one of their advisory committees. They genuinely are seeking input from superintendents and board members. They have formed alliances with the UEN, they're not, and, and even with ISFIS and are not fighting. And uh, I think I mentioned to one or more of you when I was, uh, when I was at a recent meeting, they were, um, they have taken bolder, uh, UEN friendly positions at the legislature. They are, um, I, I think they're probably haven't, um, uh, they probably haven't arrived yet, but they're well on their way. And so I don't, I don't have any reservation about recommending that we uh stay affiliated. Uh, and I, I guess, they, uh, I routinely offer my advice to their leadership and they've, uh, they've taken it graciously. And we have a, a good uh working relationship now. And I know uh Mr. Coughlin, not trying to steal his thunder, would also say that uh many of the benefits we get out of, of joining uh is uh, is good for the school district, so.
What, what is the rebate we get?
The insurance rebate? Uh, that's based on the property casualty uh claims for the year, so it really depends on um how aggressively they sell the premiums in the first place. And then what their loss uh experience is for the year. Um, the last couple of years, it's been between ten and twenty thousand. Um, but there were some significant losses as we think about Parkersburg, just into our immediate west, um, and some other areas. So we are on the verge of waiting to see what this year's rebate is, but we do not know that yet.
It looks like the fee is comparable to the population of our district. Is that a coincidence or?
I think it's kind of a coincidence. I think there's a ca- it's based on enrollment, but it's capped at ten thousand.
It's not per pupil or anything.
It might be adjusted, but for inflation.
It's pretty close to ours, that's why I had to ask. Exactly. I hadn't thought about that. You're exactly right.
A dollar per student.
It's a good point.
Yeah.
Actually, that uh membership fee has come down the last couple of years, just a little bit.
And I've been on my soapbox a lot about IASB. I, eh, there's almost two parts of it. The services part to constituents, I think they've gotten up based there. I think the UEN has done a much better job of providing guidance for our district. Um, but on the other hand, they have sort of a monopoly on pooling, basically like a buying club. I mean, almost what like VGM does in a lot of places. And so you do get the financial benefit from insurance or from other things. They, they have both. You can't decouple those, so. I think it probably does make sense this year to do it.
I, I think a safe thing, I think a safe thing that can give everybody comfort is um, there is no expectation that everybody will just, as in many years past, that everybody will just automatically join.
Yes.
They don't expect it. They come around and they, they seek input. They wanna know what they can do better. It's, it's generally migrating to a service organization, which is what we would all expect. It, and there's no arrogance. There's no, you know, we're the only game in town type of thing, so.
Any further questions or discussions? Okay, and Michael and, eh, Mr. Coughlin and Dr. Norris, thank you both. Um, uh, if not, we'll uh vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes, I have motion carried. The next item on our agenda is exhibit R. Um, and this is regarding the transportation system improvement and which we've sort of talked about eh, here over the last couple of meetings, but the busing, but eh, really the entire transportation system for the district. Um, and in our board packet, we've got a uh, a list of items, almost like a resolution um in a way, regarding um different projects for, on the busing. We'll get the, or transportation, excuse me. We'll get the motion on the table and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Norris for some background information. But the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the actions, projects, and goals listed above, adding them to the superintendent's list of priorities in the number five position. You get that motion on the table?
Move.
Okay.
So moved.
In a second. Moved and seconded. Eh, in discussion, Dr. Norris, if you could kind of walk us through this?
Sure. Um, at, at my uh evaluation session the other evening, um, which we still have work to do, as, as you pointed out, uh, setting some targets and everything for next year. Uh, but it was very clear that the board wanted to elevate the transportation system improvement up to a, a higher priority in the school district. And we've uh reacted accordingly and it is now uh, uh, the, the amount of time we're spending on it now and the amount of resources and input um is uh commensurate with your expectations. And um, Mike, I've heard you say um that we needed to focus in three different areas, savings, safety, and service. And we are indeed doing that. Um, those also happen to fit in with our broader goals uh that we have up here. And so it's, it, it's, it's, we're, it's part of our strategic plan. Um, without going too much into depth, let me say that, eh, you're all aware that, and we sent you a copy of the Eric Brash report. We had one of our technology folks that's uh particularly good in analyzing projects and uh timelines and also workflow and things like that. We had Eric look at, spend about a month and look at our busing system. And we asked him several key questions and uh, again, his work is, is on a document and, and I'd be happy to, I, I think the board has seen that document. But um, we, I picked out the ones that I thought uh went more favorably along with what you all were trying to accomplish. And listed those projects. I've spoken with Eric about them and I took him a little bit out of sequence from his report, but I had his permission to do so. And um, so these are some of his recommendations that we're going to put in place sooner rather than later to help us uh come to a conclusion about uh going farther with Camelot, also using some of the technology we've already paid for uh called Z-Pass, et cetera. Um, and then uh Project Two is sitting with us in the back of the room. He, Marty is a project. Marty has graciously agreed to, um, we, we actually, uh, I fault myself in this, but for five years, we've needed a central point of contact with transportation. Uh, we had about four or five or six points of contact and um, my, my gut told me five years ago, we needed that central point and I just didn't pull the string or pull the trigger on it. And uh, it's more important than ever now that one person uh oversees, if you will, everything. It's just too much. There's too many moving parts, no pun intended. There's just too many. Deb, that was not meant as a. Um, and so Marty has agreed to do that. I've promised him that we are going to begin immediately and Bev will post that in the next week or so, but begin looking for a permanent director of transportation. Uh, someone that uh would take some of the skills we were looking for in the original chess master position, but yet combine them uh with oversight of Durham and also making sure the Camelot project is facilitated. Um, we have been needing to sit down and formalize uh what Lyle would call our business rules, what we call our operational policies. And that is just about done. I'll get those out to the board as soon as we think we're finalized. Um, we also are recommending a, a one-time payment to Camelot to finish the software development. And I, with that, would say that we would be asking for your authorization to sit and negotiate a, a contract with Camelot. That hasn't been done yet. You don't see a, a contract here, but this whole document was trying to get all of us on one page. So we all knew what the, what the parts are. And so if you uh approve this document, what that means, or this resolution, if you will, this plan, uh, we will sit with Camelot and uh negotiate a contract. I know that one of the things uh that came up, uh, Andrea, I thought you asked a great question, was uh who will own the intellectual property? And it's something we had never discussed with them. Uh, and I think there's basically two ways we can go. If we are going to pay for the lion's share of all of this development, we ought to own it. If they are looking at it and choose to look at it as a business venture for something they can sell later, then we should be almost uh treated as their favorite children to pilot this and, and do all of that. So I don't think we've really sat with them and, and discussed those things, but I want you to know I'm very sensitive to that. And we're not gonna be paying uh large sums of money to a software developer and then that, just turning it over to someone else to sell. And they, they haven't expressed any feelings that that's what they expect either, so. Uh, but I, I do, Andrea, appreciate the question very much.
It's always good to get it in writing.
You better believe it. You better believe it. And then we've already met with and tasked Durham uh in- And I, I think Shanley and Mike and Lyle were there. We met with the Durham people and said, get going on efficiency. Look at reducing five to seven routes, as the board recalls. That was in our initial budget resolution that we passed about two months ago now. I also want to, for myself, see the benefits of Z Pass, which you graciously ordered when we ordered the new buses. But we have not yet put that into practice, and so we want to start that this year. We want to also look at moving our central bus compound to a more centralized location. We're negotiating with some other governmental entities on some of their property to see what's available. We spend maybe an extra hundred thousand dollars or more a year just taking the buses to the far south point in town. And if we could take every bus to the center part of town, I think common sense could tell you how that would save fuel and, and everything else, and maybe some time. And then we're going to look at merging a lot of our after-school activity. We have buses that arrive all times of the after-school hours and crisscross. And yeah, it's, it's something that's been developed over the years. It wasn't anybody doing anything particularly inefficient. It's just now that we see that we can do some combining. And then we also want to, not unlike the board is doing in my evaluation, but we want to be able to track metrics on a monthly, if not more frequent basis. So that, as Michael has discovered in looking and reviewing the bills from the bus company, there are some metrics that we can control. And if we have now Marty or his successor eventually, something on their screen. It's often called a dashboard in industry, but some very transparent way, we can all study what's going on on a monthly basis. I think, I think it'll, I think all of these actions will appropriately elevate this work to where you all have deemed that it should be. And, and we think it's time and appropriate. If we can save three hundred thousand dollars or four hundred thousand dollars, which we hope it would be a goal, that will put, that will allow us to put that money into classrooms and to education, so. So questions, comments, concerns, or is this kind of the direction you were thinking?
I just want to say, I know Mike and I have sat through a lot of meetings on this topic. And, and Lyle's not here to speak about this tonight, and Lyle speaks well enough for himself. But I just want to say that I appreciate the willingness of the staff and of Marty to really pick up this. This is a, this is a lot. I think it's sort of been an elephant that no one's really wanted to address. And, and what it really gets down to, to me, is, is this good for our kids? And it is. It's, it's going to be great for our kids. It's going to mean our kids' bus routes are safer. It's going to mean that after school, they don't have to wait for a bus. It may mean that they get home quicker. Their parents will know where they are. So the bottom line for all this, I think, is really beyond just that savings. I just want to make sure that, you know, we are dealing with little bodies and little people here too. And I think that, I appreciate the fact that it's something that's needed to be looked at. And I think that we're working in the right direction. So I appreciate the ten project points here. I know it's a big one, but good to do.
Thank you. Thanks, Shanley.
Yeah, I, I concur on that completely. I, I, I think it's, all this is good. And, and Andrea, just to echo what Dr. Norris said, your point on, on paragraph four, I think, was a very astute question on, on the software. And as I understand it, just as Dr. Norris said, it's still, in a sense, we're authorizing the superintendent to come up with a contract.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
And then to enter into that contract for the, the payment.
I mean, all, you know, that's just an aside and a business aside, because the whole thing is good for our kids.
Yes, yeah. But you picked up on a very good point.
And I just wanted to reiterate too, that, you know, everybody always wants to look at the dollar savings and that type of thing. But in just riding the bus with the kids swiping their card and just the safety as a parent of comfort of knowing that my child got on the bus at seven twenty-two, my child exited the bus at seven thirty-one, and my child got back on the bus, just the comfort of knowing that we have that much diligence to where that student is and when. I just think that was so effective. And I just, so, so in my eyes, if it saves money, yeah. But if we can reassure parents that their child is safe and we know where they are every moment, I, I just think that's huge from a comfort level of a parent sending a kindergartner on a bus. I mean, I just think it's important. And then I did have a question for Marty, if he wouldn't mind.
Oh, he thought he escaped.
No, I just wondered, you've been doing this interim for a short period of time right now.
Four days.
Yeah, four days. But just wondering if, with your knowledge and expertise, if you can add to the job description and maybe see areas that are the type of person that this job would work for? And if in your opinion and your experiences, if you think it is a valid position and what it would bring to the district?
It is a very valid position.
Please turn on the button, Marty, please. Thank you.
It's on.
Oh, sorry.
The green lights are on.
Yes.
Yes, it's a valid position. Right now, I worked a lot with Jane, more with Jane than I probably worked in five years. Cora, as far as the student services, there's so many people you've got to get your arms around when you're talking kids. And right now, I do my little piece, Cora does her big piece, Jane's got the after-school stuff. And there's no one that's really got their arms around the whole thing. Like I told Dr. Norris today, all we've let the bus garage do is react to our needs.
Or complaints.
Or, well, complaints for sure. But as, as Flash came on board, we said, here, you need to take these kids home. I mean, we, no one ever looked at the whole picture on how to make that happen efficiently. And so with a lot of help from Durham and with our own folks, I think we're going to see some big improvements here just real soon. We're working very hard right now on routing the Cunningham kids that start the seventeenth. So we're going to see how our first day of school goes with Cunningham. The routes will be complete probably by tomorrow afternoon. So we're on track with Cunningham. But to your first question, definitely a valid position. Myself will have some input. Eric Brash, who is just short of a genius, would have a lot of input from a technology side, a logistics perspective. Definitely have Eric weigh in on that as well.
How long do we anticipate this pilot to go on with the two schools now? We've gone from one school to two schools. Are we looking at a whole year at this, or?
You know, that is a good question. My, my thought initially, Mike, is at least a semester.
Okay.
Least a semester. And we want to do the same thing with Z Pass student tracking. And there's differences between the two tracking systems, but one might cost considerably more, so we want to look at all that. And Sue, I don't want to overpromise either, but our eventual hope is that through technology, then we can use email or text messages to let parents know when they get on. There's no reason technologically we can't do that, but we're just.
Or it would probably help intruency that they didn't get up.
Exactly.
Yeah.
No, exactly. So those are all benefits, but you've got to, the, the real thing we're after, and I thank Mike for, Mike Young for framing that, the real thing we're after is student safety, better service, getting kids home on ti- more timely. And then that will all lead to efficiency, savings.
And I think what we're, and we don't want to forget, the buses don't drive themselves to pick our children up. And all of this will be a big benefit to our bus drivers and also to the substitute drivers, who will feel much better about getting in that bus and picking up children at stops where they're not quite sure what children are supposed to be there with the Z Pass. This will be beneficial.
So you think we can find a person?
I sure hope so. Yes, I think so. There's, there's a learning curve. I mean, you may get someone that's tech savvy, that can learn the logistics. I mean, just, just learning the school district and the people who you need to talk to is quite a learning curve in itself, so.
And the acronyms.
Yeah, I'm still learning those.
Well, Marty, it, it just, you in particular, thank you for being willing to step into this role in a short amount of time.
Short, short time.
You've got, you've got plenty on your plate, but we appreciate you.
I hope you had your family vacation already.
Don't, don't even get him started on that. That is a very sore Mississippi subject.
We'll, we'll table that one.
And I guess just reiterating that we are for, I don't know if we're going to have communication sent out to the students at Bunker in Orange, especially Orange, about the pilot program, because I know the bus driver had kind of communicated a little bit with the younger kids. It's going to be a little bit harder to swipe a card, or you know what, as far as. So our communication will be critical to help with that, with the kids.
I'm, I'm counting on Ms. Trask to help. They are.
And Travis Elliott. And Dr. Norris, thank you as well.
You bet.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Okay. If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, and the chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us next on to Exhibit S, which is approval of a contract with Hanover Research, a consulting company or service company, excuse me. This is page, Exhibit S, beginning on page eighty-eight. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve a two-year partnership agreement with Hanover Research in the amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars annually. Can you get that motion on the table, please?
So move.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay. In discussion, there's some information in the board packet here, but this is really about student data and district data. And it's something that, that should help fit into what Dr. Lindeman is doing. Dr. Lindeman, are you okay to give us some background information on this and kind of explain it to the board?
Please.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Sure. We were really looking for some assistance in data analysis for a variety of reasons. First of all, we have more access to data than we have, have ever had. There's increased accountability, you know, we want to be fiscally responsible to using the money. I mean, it's, you know, there's shortage of money these days in, in education. And so we're really looking at a solution that would allow us to use our data to drive decisions. And so in looking for that solution, we came across Hanover Research. And they're really an information, a global information service is really what they are called. They work with a variety of organizations. They work with business and industry. They look, work with healthcare. They work with nonprofits, higher ed, and of course, education, P K twelve. And so they'll do a variety of things. I would just draw your attention probably just because it's, it's good to look at on page ninety-four. You can kind of see the, a variety of services they offer. Program evaluation is really a difficult area to get your mind around. It's just a, it's a pretty comprehensive analysis, and Hanover really specializes in that. So for example, I can just, to give you some examples, if you look at like Title One programming, that is a huge budget. And unless we, we would love to get some assistance in really looking at, making sure that where we're using our money is really paying off in student achievement, in teacher effectiveness. And so that would be one example. I'll just keep going through. The best practice in literature review, one of the things that Hanover provides to us is a huge data warehouse of analyses they've done for other districts. They will also do, they, they pay researchers who, actually in my retirement, I'm probably going to go work for Hanover maybe, because it sounds like it'd be really exciting. They just read, yeah.
You're not, you're not close, yeah.
I'm not kidding, but really, seriously, I think that would be the perfect option. So they read a variety of research on a different topic, and then they analyze what are the common threads that they see across all these research projects. So that would be amazing. Summer school is one that they would look at. I just was reading one today. It was on kindergarten screening tools that will help you better serve kids. I mean, that's an amazing, I mean, that'd be a great piece of research for us to look at as we look at kindergartners coming in and as we work to close any gaps that exist between pre-K and K, that kind of thing. So that's another thing they will do. Survey design administration and analysis, I, I would really call that the customized piece of Hanover. They, they provide for us a project queue, and we can dump requests into the queue. We can just keep it as full as we want, and they will work on one or two at a time. And as soon as they finish that one, they'll pull up a new one. We can reorder them, reprioritize at any point in time. I think they actually, I think Dr. Norris even put an, an example of what the request would look like, a project request form. So we, we put those, and that's on page ninety-nine, it looks like. So we can keep the queue full. We just got access to the queue this week, and so I'm already working on my first request to dump in there. And so we'll, they've assigned to us two people that are kind of, one of them I call is the, the content specialist, who she, she will make sure that the requests go to the right people. So they kind of do the work, and the other one is assigned to make it, keep us happy. So kind of the, the project manager, who's the customer service person. And so, and then the last thing, the benchmarking, which I would really call that the comparative data. If we want to look at what we're doing comparison to other districts like us in demographics or like us in size, whatever, we could put a, put a request in the queue, and they would help us analyze and benchmark, how do we compare to other districts in a certain area? So they do a variety of things. I think in the, the, they will do not just educational academic research, but also operations, busing, transportation, a variety of things. I was just looking in the queue last week, and not in, in our queue, but in their research pool. And it's just amazing what people have done, done in, or have requested. So we would have the, we own the, the intellectual property, if anybody wants, wonders that. We own that. But we can sign off to have our, whatever they find, our findings be part of a meta-analysis, which is just that conglomeration or the aggregation of a variety of research projects. Or we can opt to not do that, which is fine. We can just keep it for us because we're paying for it for us. But there may be some benefit to allowing people to look at our findings or either by, by name or by aggregated with a variety of other districts with, you know, in anonymous way. So I don't know. That was really kind of a, tried to be short on that. How'd I do?
Go ahead. How do they get, we send them the data. I mean, they just don't have access with, let's pull some data from the wild.
No, no, it, it really actually.
No, that would be the best, just to send it, yeah.
Yeah, it goes in in an Excel file into a private queue, and we upload it, and then they have access to retrieve it from that. They, once we do the request, they immediately have a person call me, and then we talk through or call Bev or Cora, depending, what if it was a staffing thing, then we would assign them to call Bev. And Bev would talk through, and they might say, well, Bev, you know, here's what, I'm thinking, maybe you want to look at this. Do you have this data existing? So they'll kind of talk it through, and then they go from, from there. The, the two people that are assigned to us, one of them is really not necessarily specific to education. She really is in customer satisfaction. She's the one to keep us happy. The other one is, is assigned to only educators, so she's got that specialty or expertise, I guess, in the area of education.
So who in our district can send data? Can the teachers send data?
No, no, really, this is probably broader than just the teachers. We wouldn't really have a teacher looking at, I think, this is really district analysis. I would suspect that I might regulate that very, because I think the queue's going to fill up pretty quickly. And so I think we'll make some district decisions. I would say that probably a lot of the queue would be filled up with cabinet, you know, district level things. And we'll start with some of the bigger things.
Can faculty have access to the literature, to the reviews, the best practices?
You know, they, they can. And there's a, there's just a little download report, and I've already started downloading certain reports, and it goes as a PDF. And I've been sending them to, you know, there's a great at-risk report on there. I have not read it yet. I saw it on there. So I plan to download that and send that to Cora Turner. So it's just, yeah, you can do that. Once you pay for the service, we can publicize in, in any way.
So we're given so much room then on the queue. Once we've asked our limit of questions, we're done for the year kind of thing?
They will keep at it for the whole year. So as fast as they process, they'll take the next one. So as long as we, I told Dr. Norris that sometimes I get so busy, my commitment is to be so responsive. The minute, the, the minute the request comes up, the next one comes due, and they call me, I need to be there because otherwise they're stalled waiting for me or Bev or Michael or whoever. So we need to be response, responsive to those replies. So they'll, they'll keep working on one or two at a time, and the minute one's done, they take the next one.
Most educators that have done work at the university level have, have heard of a company called E R S. Used to stand, they're, they're defunct now. They, it stands for Educational Research Services. Hanover bought them. The head of that was our speaker. was our speaker at our in-service last year, John Draper, used to be the head of ERS. He ran something similar for education primarily, and Hanover bought bought them and accessed all of their former work, and so it's a similar.
Do you know other districts that have had?
There are, yeah. Council Bluffs, help me Gary, Council Bluffs and Iowa City. There are a lot of the other people who do the same job that I am doing from the UENS. They are really getting pretty interested in Hanover. They're starting to make a really strong step into, especially urban education, a lot of the, you know, a district that might be a little bit bigger, that is a little more comprehensive and harder to analyze the data. I mean, there's just a lot of data to to do that, and so I think they're really getting a foothold.
Well, I think it's important to have because I think there's an expectation across the nation
Absolutely.
that we take this data and use it to the best advantage for our students.
Absolutely.
And I know you just have tons of millions and billions of it, so.
Yeah, we do have a lot.
And I hope you'll share it with, not not everything with us, but that was one of my questions, is how are we gonna use it? Because it's only as good as the information that comes back to us, and we just let it sit.
Absolutely, right. Right.
So I'm, you know.
Absolutely.
And Jane, I was impressed when you explained it to Mike and I, we met with Gary, how much time it will save you. Because you're looking at all of the data in the whole Waterloo School District, where you can plug into this system, and it can spit it out, you know. The turnaround time is really great. And I I'm also happy about like our Title One students.
Right.
How we can keep track of our students and make the comparison of their progress of those who are not in Title One. There's so many things that you can do if, in using this system, as keeping up with the progress of our students, not just students, but the overall district really, because there's so many areas it's gonna cover.
Yeah, Bernice, it's probably in the category of working smarter, not harder.
Yeah, right.
And and believe it or not, it is really not easy to find people who are good at data analysis, or who like it. I mean, there's a few people that I've, a few teachers or administrators that I have asked to help me with things, but they don't necessarily have any more time than I do, and it's kind of a necessary thing at this point.
Yeah, and and that point was very important to me, looking at it just from a funding standpoint, from a taxpayer standpoint, let's say. This is, there was a position that wasn't filled, Jane, when you were promoted, and it sounds like kind of by hook or by crook, you've gotten by over the last few years with getting the data.
Lots of night hours.
Looking at it, yeah, exactly, and and asking some other people to help, but having the data researched, and the research available is important because as a district, we're already spending so much money, I mean, depending on how you count, it's, you could look at a huge percent of our job, percentage of our budget that goes to instruction, and this is looking at it to make sure what we're spending our money on is actually
It's a smart move.
doing what we want it to do, whether we're seeing the results of, that we want to, or if not, and figuring out why not, if that's okay, or if it's not okay, if we need to change things, so. I thought it was a wise investment.
It's gonna be pretty hard to quantitate the value versus what you have been doing or have been staffing out in the past that will not now be done by this system, in that it will potentially save money in the district.
Absolutely. We have some, you know, look at the money that we, that through grants we we put in into our our PLAS schools. I noticed that there were some reports on grant money to improve education in a particular school. I mean, that, if we could have them measure things like that, Title One, I mean, that's at-risk programming, those budgets are really large, and so, yeah, yeah, it's actually kind of a, the the annual subscription fee is kind of a drop in the bucket. I mean, it's certainly significant money. I'm not making light of that at all, but comparatively, it's very small.
To have some feedback, yeah.
Now, and can you like personalize exactly what you want with the data you provide, and then they do a comparative analysis?
They do it with research questions, much like you would if you were doing a master's project or a doctorate. They do it with research questions, so they ask you, what is it that you want to know? And so once you put in your research questions, then they help you customize what that analysis would look like, based on either the data that you have. And interestingly enough, they will do qualitative or quantitative. So they'll, you know, they'll take anecdotal, they'll do a a survey and and put all of that together and try to make some sense out of themes, which is just the the qualitative piece of it, instead of, it's not all just numbers, survey crunching. So they they have a, they're they're well skilled at what they are doing.
So if a group of, you know, like math educators came to you and said, we'd like to see this, that would be available?
Yeah, like to see what?
Like, for instance, if the group of high school masters at East High, or teachers at East High, educators, said, we want to see how this, teaching this aspect is relating over to the student versus test scores, yes.
Right, how it's impacting instruct, right, right. Yeah, absolutely. I really think, that kind of goes back to what Mike was saying, or Andrea, I'm sorry. I think we'll be real selective in what goes in the queue at the very beginning. We probably would not tie up the queue with a with a proposal that doesn't, we're gonna look for the most, the projects that impact the most students right now, maybe the ones that have the biggest budgets. Would I, would I put in a project request for a particular math program? Maybe or maybe not, depending on if it was something that typically I do, I do those, so I mean, I can, it's, for example, when we did the Skills Iowa, we did a huge Skills Iowa analysis, and just for me to just crunch the numbers took me pretty much an entire day. I happened to do it on an ice storm day, so it was great, but I mean, those are, well, I know, I'm sorry, that's why I like that thing, but, yeah, I mean, it it takes, you know, it's a good ten, ten, fifteen hours sometimes to crunch the numbers and get it out in a format that actually makes some sense. So it's it's a significant chunk of time.
For instance, I know Jane would never say it, but the, after doing that analysis, are, some of our principals that may, I emphasize, may have been reticent to, or some of the schools, use Skills Iowa, were able to see how closely it correlated to the results of the Iowa assessments. So the value in it was taking the data, showing our professionals, no, this is real stuff. That's, that's priceless.
And interestingly enough, that particular analysis has kind of gone statewide. I have gotten so many phone calls over, can you come and look at this? You know, how did you do that? What would we do? That's the kind of stuff that I would love to have multiplied exponentially. I would, I mean, I love to do that, but the bottom line is, we have big jobs, and so it's hard to, I mean, you can't squeeze any more hours out of the day, even though we try, so.
I think you like it.
Oh, I love, yeah.
Can't you tell?
I told you, when I retire in, you know, a long time, yeah.
She has a passion for Excel spreads.
I do, I am, yes, I do.
Now you're staying up all night thinking of questions.
Yeah, no, that's true. I am, my mind is already turning, so.
Well, Jane, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The chair votes aye, motion carried. Jane, thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is for insurance, for property casualty and workers' compensation insurance. This is Exhibit T on page one hundred, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the quote, recommended by the District Insurance Committee to participate in the IASB Safety Group Plan with a total estimated premium of one million six hundred thirteen thousand two hundred and three dollars as presented.
Moved up, moved.
Thank you, in a second. Okay, in discussion, Michael Coughlin, if you could just give us some background information on this. It's, there's really a breakdown on page one oh one of our board packet.
I just wanted to bring to your attention a couple of things on that second page, where you can see where the numbers are coming from. They've supplied the last two years of history and then the new rates, and the top portion is the property liability auto portion of it, and that has actually gone up about eleven and a half percent, eleven point four three, and it is a market that's tight. We live in a world that's pretty uncertain today. And even with all of those things happening, they were able to come in relatively close to a year ago. But what we are seeing in very much our favor, and because of a lot of hard work out of the HR department, with our insurance committee and with Bev's staff, the workers' comp coverage, we couldn't even get people to bid on it a few years ago, and now we have people fighting for it. So.
They just want to work with Bev, is that what you're saying?
So that is really a testament to all the work that they have done on that, and we have changed some language in the contracts to get people back to work quicker, and so it's been a, it's been a three or four-year effort to get to that place, and we are showing a fourteen point four two percent reduction in the premium on that. So overall, the property liability, liability, casualty, auto, and workers' comp is going down almost seven point two percent from the current year. That's very good news. We also have the commissions listed underneath. That is part of the total above. It's not in addition to. It's just they, it was something we requested several years ago, and they were happy to make that happen. We do have a unique relationship here with the insurance industry. For this insurance, we have a committee of local insurance agents that are overseeing, evaluating, critiquing, and advising us on what we should do, and then, as I was saying, especially with workers' comp, they are here on a monthly basis, and more if needed, to deal with every individual case, and also how to present, prevent things from happening. So they are very much involved, not just sell us the insurance and we'll see you next year. There was one we did, if you look at the notes on the bottom, we had a quote on workers' comp from a different company than what we're carrying. We have United Heartland, and EMC came in and underbid them a little bit, but really the evaluation of what we have done and all the procedures involved, we felt that dollar amount was not worth the difference of changing companies, because it would just take one claim to go a little bit different, and it would certainly take care of, take up all of that difference. So this was really part of their advice to us, which we all agree as well. We've got about three or four people on the insurance committee from the district, and then there's three or four insurance agents that we work as a team to get to this point. So we are pleased, all of us, to present this as an option for us for thirteen fourteen. The other side of the equation that you saw recommendation on was what's called equipment repair insurance, and we started that last year. And there were a lot of different issues. We got started with it a little late, before we got up to speed, and we were hoping to get about eighty percent of the premium covered with claims, and it's gonna be fifty to sixty percent this year. So we had a heart-to-heart talk with our insurance committee and with this insurance carrier, and said, we need to, we need to be better with this, and what can we do? So they actually came in and dropped the rates thirty-four percent. So we could, really what we're looking at is a two-year plan, making up that eighty percent rather than trying to do it each year. So we should, we've got the ball rolling, just based on our claims in the last three months. If you predict that for the next year, it'd be close to five hundred thousand. So we should, we should make up a lot of ground that we didn't get this year, so a two-year review of the program should be in pretty good shape. If that does not happen, then we won't be renewing, but I think we have a lot of things that we have learned, and feel like it can be successful the second year. With this, just to remind you, this all comes out of management fund. Everything that we can do through the equipment repair saves the general fund money for repairs and time for technicians, and then all of our copiers are also covered under that through our vendor. So it it covers all the technology, all of the operations, that's electrical, that is not HVAC. So everything that plugs in, basically, plus all of our copiers. So just to give you an idea, in the last three months, we averaged a hundred and twenty-two claims a month. So there's a lot of things that happen in repair and upgrading and taking care of electrical equipment, so it's a, it's a pretty big job. So we feel good about recommending this for the second year, hopefully getting us on board to get closer to what we projected in the first place.
Well, thank you, Michael. It's always good to see the, the reduction in the amount, so. It's always good news. Thank you for all your work on this. Any, any questions or discussion? Okay, Michael, thanks again. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Our last item on the agenda is for an interfund loan resolution. And the resolution is on page one oh two of our board packet, and I won't read it, I'll just go ahead and we'll get the motion on the table and then go through an explanation of this. But the recommended motion is that the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing an interfund loan from the general fund to the capital projects fund of up to six million five hundred thousand, the physical plant and equipment fund of up to one million five hundred thousand, and the food service fund of up to one million two hundred thousand, as provided under the DE declaratory order. Can we get that motion on the floor, please? Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Okay. In a discussion, Michael, this is basically transferring funds within our district, and district funds just through different accounts, but all internal. If you could just give us some background information on the purpose of this.
When we look at the three different funds that are listed here, the general fund has enough cash flow to help out the cash flow of other funds. The money that comes in for the one cent doesn't come in quite fast enough to make the, all of the payments for the projects that are going on as we finish Orange this year. And then, physical plant and equipment, we get that over, spread over the year, and we do a lot of projects early in the year, so it just kind of drains that account at the beginning of the year, and that's the one point five million. And then food service is basically paying for the food, the supplies, the wages with the, with the food service program, and then we get reimbursements from the federal government and the state government after the fact. So we're always a little bit behind during the year, as the year goes on with food service, but it catches up at the end. So this is a required motion for the board, for us to be able to, for you to approve us to do this, that we're just moving our own money in between the funds to cover those, those deficiencies.
Gotcha.
And I assume the Department of Ed asked for this, it's a transparency.
Of course. And it really is. I mean, rather than the auditor having to come in and and scrutinize this, it's all above board from the beginning.
Yeah, because it looks like it's all paid paid back by October.
Yes, it's required to be.
It's just so we don't have to borrow money from somebody else. We have money in the general fund. We, we're essentially borrowing it from ourselves.
Yep. And actually, we pay a better rate than the bank does.
Yes, yes.
How do they come up with the six point five billion?
That's just a conservative estimate of how fast Orange will get done as compared to the money coming in. And then we have a couple other projects happening across town at Hoover. So it's really a timing issue of how close we'll come to that number.
So we might use it all, or we might not.
Correct. That's why we say up to, and we only borrow across what we really need.
And when we borrow, we have to charge us, ourselves interest.
Yep, it's required that we charge the other funds an interest rate, so.
But then the DE doesn't set any limit amounts on any of that?
On the interest rate or the dollar amount?
Either.
The interest rate, their suggested amount, you can tell how old this policy is, was six percent. And we said, probably not. So we we do one percent.
So you, the districts can set their own.
Yes.
Everybody would be wanting to loan money to the district.
Any further question or discussion? All right, Michael, thank you again. If not, all those in favor of the motion, please. Uh Michael, thank you again. Um if not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. And that concludes the action items on our agenda. Um and it was a lot with, during the summer when we have less frequent board meetings, they add up quickly. But that's it. Um so now is the time for um the superintendent's report. Turn it over to Dr. Norris.
Thanks, Mike. Three uh quick items. Tomorrow uh begins our Urban Superintendent Conference in Milwaukee this time. So I look forward every year to seeing what um urban districts are doing all across the country. So I'll have a report ready for you uh in a week or so of of that. Also, uh next week, we'd like to get together with Lyle, Sue, and Andrea and begin to finalize those pay-for-performance hard targets. And uh I'll have Pam contact you, finish up my evaluation. And then uh Jane and I and Bev and Dr. Barney were uh interviewing for Amy Moyn's replacement. And we should have a recommendation ready shortly on that. So some good candidates out there.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Norris. Um and now it, it's time for information from board members. Um I'll start with Mike Kinsey.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Andrea Sparks?
Well, I'm kind of out of it like probably the students. When does school start this year?
Well, for cutting him, it's soon, yeah.
August twenty-second.
Yeah, but it's August, yeah.
Yeah, the summer's been going fast. I hope everybody's up there reading.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Andrea. And Bernice Richard?
No report.
Okay, thank you. And Sue Flynn?
No report.
And Chandler McNally?
No report.
Okay, thank you. Um a- and just for an explanation, I I should have mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting. Originally, we had a board workshop set for three thirty today um to review basically the academic data from the Iowa assessments. Um and it's, that was delayed or postponed because we still don't have the certification back from the state of Iowa, from the Department of Ed. And so once we get the, did it come in today or Friday?
I certified today at three thirty-eight.
Oh, okay.
So it takes forty-eight to seventy-two hours before we'll get data.
Gotcha, okay. So in the next few weeks, we'll, we'll let everybody know. Uh we'll probably set up a board workshop or uh some system to go through that. It's a little tougher um in the summer. But this year, it seems like everything, everything seems to be late, whether it's financial, with the budget and and everything else. But um so we will get that uh um that information out when it's available. Um if there's nothing further, our next board meeting is on Monday, August twelfth at five P M. Um back here in the boardroom. And again, that meeting will be at five. Then after that, we're back to every couple of weeks, 'cause school will be starting then, so. Uh if there's nothing further, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Tell them.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
President, in the, in the book, it says August twelfth, six P M. We go back to regular time.
Oh, yes. Oh, is it six P M?
Uh-huh, and uh, 'cause we have two meetings.
Okay, I'm sorry. I looked at.
Yeah.
I looked at, excuse me. Yes, thank you for bringing, I was looking at the July eighth meeting. It is six P M. So we're back to our regular calendar at our next meeting.
You'd be here by yourself, Mike.
Thank you for bringing. Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait till six. Um thank you again. Um if nothing further, all those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried, we're adjourned. Thank you all.